All right. Those wishing to address the board during public comments or during a public comment agenda item 5.03 must turn in a public comment form. Prior to the start of the meeting at five o'clock, any form submitted after the session has started. Will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Are there any? Before we get started here, any other public comment forums that need to get turned in? All right, it is five o'clock on PM on Monday, August 28th. This is a regular. Board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are Director Barnes, Director Edskorn, Director Whitfield. Superintendent Sean Woodward, District Leadership Team. Members and school district staff as well as members of the community. President Bumpus will not be in attendance this evening. And so I get to be backup quarterback tonight. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link on the board director's website. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to tonight's meeting. We are happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting. Our audio recording will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear that the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on these issues either. In earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time. To study the issues, ask appropriate questions and and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff. Or through outside research, those wishing to address the. The board during public comments must turn up a comment form. Prior to the start of the meeting, which I already mentioned at 5pm, any form submitted after the meeting, as I'll say again, has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Just as an update, we have one late add. Item to the agenda 7.04, the payroll report has now been attached to the agenda. So that is now accessible. We finally got that on there. And then review. Of the agenda, is there a motion to approve? The agenda.
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated August 28, 2023.
Sir, second.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second to approve the Monroe School District Board of Directors agenda dated August 28, 2023. On favor, raise your hand. Motion is passed 420. Agenda item has passed 420. It's not a motion. All right. Moving on to presentations, I'd like to invite our first presenter tonight, Sarah Lundstrom. Come on down. The co-executive director of Community and Development with Take the Next Step.
There we go. Am I official? Okay. Thank you for having me and thank you for giving me this opportunity to give you just an update about. What we've been up to at Take the Next Step, and I know that some of you, but not all of you may be aware of. Everything we do at Take the Next Step, so I'm grateful to be able to share this with you and give the update. So Take the Next Step is your nonprofit family resource center. So we're located in Monroe and serving. The vulnerable families here in Monroe. So it is pretty rare that we're working with a family that does not have a child in the Monroe School District as that is our service area. Just to give you an overview, we have the Resource Center here in Monroe and so. Our staff there are our local resource experts and it can be pretty daunting when. A family has something going on, you never know what it might be. And to know kind of what resources are out there and how do you access them and what might apply to my family and our situation and so. Our navigators can kind of sit with folks and hear about what they've got going on and then start to match them with resources, whether they be in-house or. In the community and we have a decent amount of financial assistance available for basic needs. As well as legal aid and hygiene items, diapers and wipes, food, that kind of thing at the Resource Center. It's through the Resource Center that we process our mental health referrals and so. We got a good chunk of funding both from the county and from the city of Monroe ARP funds. To pay for our community's mental health needs and so we've been, we've now processed. About 100 referrals. That we have just sent on to three of the different providers that we're working with in the community and paid for those services so that those families. Could access those services free of charge. We're really working closely with the student support advocates at the different schools to funnel. The students with the top needs into those resources. I've already had in the summer. Two of the different student support advocates reach out to me concerned about this funding for next year and if we're going to be able to have it and we are reaching. The end of it. So my co-executive director and I, Sarah, just went to just sab and. Told them that we're running out of this funding and it is definitely some of the most impactful dollars that we've spent for ARP funds, just. Spending money on families' mental health needs. For those of you that might not be aware, at the beginning of the pandemic, we had Compass Health in our. Community and they had to close their doors and they were the main mental health provider for our district. So. We had around 175 students at that point left kind of high and dry for their mental health needs and so. It's been really awesome to have something to kind of step in and fill this gap. It's been such a huge need and so I'm really hoping and praying that we're going to have continued funding. Some other cool things that have happened with this funding was that we got support groups at Frank Wagner and Park Place Middle School. We had LGBTQIA plus support groups. And we also had these really cool intensive summer programs. That used STEM principles to teach social and emotional learning, which kind of like blew my mind. It was a really cool idea and a really cool way that they went about it. And those were taught by the mental health providers that we're working with, Stories of Hope and Holly McCallum at North Sound Counseling. It's also the Resource Center that processes our sports and activities scholarships and so. We went through, we applied for and received $10,000 in City of Monroe ARP funds that we've already blown through. And Pursuit Fitness has been very generous and continued these funds for us, so. We've paid out, I think it's going to be around $13,000 for students in our district to access sports and activities and I'm very open-ended about what an activity is. It can be dance, it can be. We've had kids in jujitsu, we've had kids impacted by youth suicide that have lost parents. And siblings this year that were able to access the support of. The groups that they had been with in the past cheerleading and different things so they could continue those. And obviously, we all know how great it is for kids to be able to access a healthy activity, to get plugged into something that's good for them and they get to. Connect with other kids that are into that same thing too. So the benefits just, you know, are. Numerous and we're going to continue to be doing that. So. Really awesome and really awesome to work with the high school too and their sports medicine crew to kind of funnel kids in that that need those funds to participate in programs. Of course, we have our Kids Club After School Program. That program works very closely with Frank Wagner, our Title I school. We target our high poverty neighborhoods for our Kids Club After School Program and so all of our high poverty neighborhoods, of course, attend Frank Wagner Elementary. So the kids are bust over from Frank Wagner and we do healthy snacks, academic time, social and emotional learning mentoring. We build resiliency in children who've experienced trauma. We also share. Curriculum with the school district called Sources of Strength. It's an evidence-based suicide prevention program. And so every month we focus on one of the sources of strength for our theme for Kids Club. So it could be things like. Healthy activities, positive friends, mentorship, spirituality, generosity. All things that we kind of deep dive and dive into each month and. Explore for the kids about how they can be sources of strength in their lives and why they are meaningful to the people sharing with them. At Kids Club, we also kind of get to, I think it's just a little different environment than school in such a way that. Kids often get to kind of talk to us about what's going on in their lives and then we get an opportunity to advocate and help them out. And so we heard from a number of different kids and Kids Club this year about. You know, different bullying, they might have been experiencing racial comments and slurs that had been directed towards them. I had a student who was getting bullied because of what she was eating at school and so she wasn't bringing any food to school all day and wouldn't eat. And we found that Hugo and Deb at Frank Wagner are very receptive to. I mean Hugo is on top of it. Every time I sent him an email about a concern for a student, they are really great over there and so. I'm always right over there talking with them about whatever's going on with one of our Kids Clubbers and they're right on top of it and. And I hear, because I then I see on Tuesday, I'm going to see that kid again and I'm going to ask them how it's going at school, you know, and I'm going to see them again on Thursday and so. I am hearing from them good reports back that they're being taken care of at school. I really. Our goal at Kids Club is to support the kids so that they have support at Kids Club, at school and at home and that we're all on the same page and so. We absolutely get that from the staff at Frank Wagner. And love working with them. We also at Kids Club, we work with a lot of kids that often don't get opportunities for leadership. A lot of them might be. The wily kid or the kid that maybe is getting in trouble for not paying attention sometimes at school. But we love to give those kids opportunities for leadership and so. Our former Kids Clubbers can come back as middle school and high school students and take on leadership roles at Kids Club and. It's been really cool. I've had it happen. I don't know how many times where a volunteer will see a sixth grader come back that was a fifth grader last year and ask me, is that so and so? Because they're. They just, they sit different, they hold themselves different when they can be a leader and some of the kids, they just think that they're like. Top dog, like the coolest thing in there when they get to be a leader and haven't done that before. And so it's, it's really cool and it's really cool to see the transformation in students when they get to do that. And we take all of our even fifth graders on college visits and the majority of our Kids Clubbers. Are from families that don't have family members who have attended college before and so. We want to even open that door for our fifth grade students to know that this is something you can do. It's a possibility. I came from a family where I didn't think that college was a possibility for me and so I know what it's like to. Like kind of hear those words and let them kind of just glaze over your head and think that they don't apply to you and so. We love to show the kids that this is something that can apply to you or it could be a trade school, it could be anything, but you can, you know, you can further your education after high school and this is something you have access to. Lastly, I wanted to highlight another one of our programs is our Growing Together Teen Mom Program. Right now, we have the most teen moms in our program that we've had in quite some time. We just had this year our first two middle school referrals for the Teen Mom Program. So pretty vulnerable young students and families and many of them. Honestly. Some I would call unaccompanied minors. Many that don't have safe home spaces and so. Really, really awesome to get them plugged in and connected with a lot of different supports in our Teen Mom Program. For that program, we don't have an overarching goal. We really just want to help the moms reach their goals and so some. Some might want to go back to school, some might want to get a job, some might really just need help meeting their basic needs. And so we're walking alongside them through whatever they've got going on and helping them, you know, meet their needs and get to where they need to go and. Make sure that them and their kiddos have. Opportunities that all of us should have access to and so. While some of them are pretty young and it's, it is kind of presenting a new. Challenge. It's a little different than the moms we've taken on previously that were just a little bit older. We're glad that we're here for them and this last year, we actually were able to start. A corresponding group for their partners because we ended up really seeing that. We see generational traumas perpetuated. So often you really only know what you know and so you know what you saw in your parents' relationship and. If that relationship maybe wasn't the most healthy, then you don't have a lot other, you know, a lot of other sources to draw from and so. If it was a violent relationship, we're seeing the violence carried out in these younger relationships and so. It's been really awesome. All the partners are males and so we've had a group of dads. That once a month, when our moms get together, we're all having dinner together and then the mom split off and the dad split off and the dads have. Some other dads to have access to that. Just can support them and what they're going through, present other ways of doing things that maybe they haven't been exposed to or learned and. It's really cool and been really interesting to really get to know the heart of these guys. Especially if you've maybe seen them perpetuating some unhealthy behaviors. That you saw from a distance and then when you kind of get to know them a little bit more and you realize what's really happening, it's not like these are. Bad men or bad people, they're really carrying out the only thing that they know how to do and so. We're hoping to. You know. Stop that and find an alternative way for them and help them be healthy families and productive members of our community. And so those are the main overlaps that I'm seeing right now. I'm happy to answer any questions and I look forward to connecting with Holly as well to set up a one-to-one with. Sean so we can dive in a little deeper. Just really appreciate working with the school district to, you know, support these very vulnerable families. Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, I do. First off, thank you very much for all that you do and your organization does for this community. So out of all the services you provide, which? Have a higher demand from the community than what you can fulfill?
All of them.
All of them. So you're like, so like the after-school program, you have way more kids want to get in than you can take in.
Yes, we always have a waitlist for Kids Club, so we always need more volunteers. Our capacity for Kids Club is dependent on volunteers and so. The more volunteers we bring in, the more kids we can bring in. For sure, that funding for mental health right now, I feel like is so crucial for children and families and so. We're pursuing some, you know, different avenues to try to get that together. I mean, things like rental assistance are really hard to come by right now. They're not always. Included in our basic needs funds that we get from the county, say. And we have a lot of families that are going to be facing eviction, especially post-COVID. And eviction moratorium. Some of that is still kind of playing out. I think we heard a number recently that we have about 200,000 families in Snohomish County facing eviction. I can't remember what the timeframe was, maybe in the next six months or so. It's a lot. Yeah, and families learn better when they've got a roof over their heads, huh? Thank you everyone very much. Appreciate it.
Hold on, Sarah.
Oh, sorry, do you have a question?
I got questions. I was taking notes. You got, yeah, I'd say. First, I just, I really appreciate you and the partnership that you've had with the district and. Had a couple of questions. One, I was curious for Take the Next Step with the volunteers that you've had, what is your estimated attendance, average attendance for Kids Club for this coming school year?
We, we, let's see, last year, I think we capped out about 45 students and I think that the most we've ever had was about 60.
If you had enough volunteers. What would your facilities be able to capacitate at or what would be the capacity max that you could do based on square footage?
Probably around 80, I would say.
And then one, that leads in my next question, just thinking about when Jen and I got to meet with you. Feels like a long time ago because lots happened since then. But just really appreciate that and that was, I think, my big question then when we first had a chance to meet. Was moving in as we get ready to start this quarter, what is the best way for our district to partner with you and work alongside? Take the next step. What are things that we could do alongside you guys realistically that you would say, hey, if. In an ideal world, these would be wonderful things for us to continue our partnership.
Well, really ideally, I love for our relationship, like when we're seeing needs in the community, when you're seeing unfulfilled needs in the community to sit down with us and let's brainstorm about how we can fill them together. Especially the ones that are affecting, you know, families in our district. It's hard to think of. An issue in our community that doesn't affect them, you know, and so. We're really here to help, like that's how we think of ourselves and so and we don't have a fence around that and so. We are absolutely open to collaboration and brainstorming and thinking together about, you know, possible solutions to. To problems that might be tough to think about on your own. Yeah.
Awesome. I had one last question because it really touched my heart. I love that you have the program for the new and up and coming moms and dads. Do you have any curriculum that helps you guide through when they, you have the dads who are meeting with other more experienced dads and the moms meeting with them? Do you guys have any materials to help guide them through that to give them some?
I know that we, we do kind of, we collaborate a lot with Joe Nagel and he's been a great source of a lot of curriculum, but. The dad's group is pretty new and I bet that we would be open to, yeah. To any sources that you might have for that.
I would love to sit down and brainstorm and collaborate with you.
Let's do it.
That's awesome. Okay, cool. Thank you so much, Sarah, for your time. Appreciate it.
Everyone. Good to see you all.
All right, our next presentation will be an update on safety, security and risk management with Victor Scarpelli. Come on down. Oh, and Kelly Pitts is also coming on down for that. Thank you so much. Kelly is our Director of Safety and Risk Management. Thank you, Kelly.
We're still on, okay. So Jesse's going to help me out, put a presentation up here. Just to kind of give you an overview of. Safety and risk management, kind of some of my duties and kind of where we're at and maybe where we might be headed. So. So here's what kind of comes across my desk. Student injuries. Employee injuries. Bus injuries. E collisions. And those are really just a perspective of like looking at them and saying, hey, is there something we need to be doing, changing? Playground equipment. Is there some more training we need for bus drivers? Is there something that we need to be addressing and looking at to, to address? To minimize these things that are going on? I'm officially the Chemical Hygiene Officer for the district and then each of the schools that have chemistry. Programs has somebody that's assigned at the schools, the overall purveyor of that and then the. The state comes through and does inspections and then they give a report back to me and says, hey, we need to be abiding by. Certain parameters and rules, things like that. We get graded. They give us. The best guidance that we can have so that we don't get into trouble. So I just met with. The gal last month came up, we did a walkthrough at the high school. Did a review of what they had seen before. Trying to identify how to address some of the things that we need to address. And then I'll be meeting with the Chemical Hygiene Officer for each of the schools and addressing those things. Sports-related safety guidelines, if there's any changes, one of the big ones at this time of year is. Air quality, heat threat assessments, what if we had some sort of. Natural disaster or major event intruder at one of these sporting events. So those are the things that we have to consider. Using the field. Outside entities using it, are they covered under insurance, things like that? So things to look out for. Our overall emergency operations plans for the district. Trying to keep those updated in the middle of getting that completed now. Emergency drills, making sure we're meeting state guidelines for monthly drills. Emergency preparedness so that if we have one of those natural disasters or something like that during a school time period that. The teachers, folks in the schools have the resources that they need and are, are trying to. To replenish those if they need to, giving them some guidelines for that. There's also a mandate for safety committees with that, with each school and additionally for the district. So. I run the one for the district and then try and make sure that all of the schools are doing theirs. They report them back to me, collect them and again, that's. Data that goes back to the state at the end of the year. Overall physical safety, the schools, that's the one big thing that everybody thinks about from the security standpoint. Visitors and visitor management, volunteer management. We have a program that if somebody wants to go to school, be a volunteer for a classroom, parent. Then they have to get a background check, make sure they're not a registered sex offender, things like that. There's, there's all kinds of options out there and are we using the best one that. Does what we need for it and offers the best. Guidelines for it, so. Field trips, I look at all the field trips and assess those and see what risks are involved with those, make sure that they've checked all the boxes, that they're pre-planning. That they're. Getting all the right signatures on it, that they let the nurse's office know that there are students with special needs, that those are being addressed for those trips. Kind of a full purview, parents are aware that they're going, that their kids are going to be gone for the day, things like that. And then this is the big one that, that my team addresses and it's investigating student rules, violations and activities, any sort of behaviors. They're housed at the high school, but they go to all the schools, as I think you guys know. But probably the largest one is this smoking or vaping, vaping has become so big. Harassment, intimidation, bullying. Those along with Joe Nagel, he and I put our eyes on most of those. He gets the larger bulk of the investigation side of that, but I may have to deal with something on the safety side to address initially. So I get a purview of those also. Again, weapons at school, always a big concern. Illegal drugs or alcohol, assaults, that could be physical or sexual assaults. Assist with parking, parking lot issues. Escorting students sometimes to and from class that. Tends to be more than I would guess I would like to see it, but. If we're involved with some other issue, that becomes one of the lower priority deals, but there's times where. We'll get called to go escort a student from a class to a restroom. And back to make sure that they're not skipping class or that they're not getting in trouble somewhere in the middle of that. And then threat assessment, so any sort of issue when we have a required threat assessment. I'm the one that, that ends up in a meeting with that. We just lost. The other security person that would have been doing those in the past. He's moved on to a different school. So we just hired, in fact, just hired two folks today. We'll get to that here in a minute, but. Security, trained individuals working together as a team who regularly respond to emergencies and non-emergencies. And partner with administrators to standardize investigations into varying behaviors that disrupt educational environment. And that's our main focus from the security standpoint is trying to make sure that we're addressing what we need to from students' behavior. So I have Carly Thompson. I think she's, it's been Carly Bingham, but I think she's going back to her maiden name here. Soon as she can. And then these two are the two that we just got agreements with today, Malcolm Mack and Chris Duff, who bring. Mr. Mack brings quite a bit of experience from previous school security work and Mr. Duff brings quite a bit of. Mr. Mack brings quite a bit of experience from previous school, security work, and Mr. Duff brings quite a bit of, uh, retail uh, asset protection with his experience. So we're, we just filled those other two positions, literally just today. Myself, and then we have the school resource officer, Officer Robertson. And then, uh, there is a school resource deputy assigned to the East County, uh, our area, which is, uh, Kevin Lynch. I have a, a little bit of contact with him, not a lot, but I will be arranging a meeting with him and kind of see him. He's been from, uh, Melanie Gray and, and after up at Chain Lake, both of them have said he, he's showed up at a couple of their drills and expressed interest in coming by and adding input on those. So he seems to be reaching out and, and wanting to be involved with the schools there. Mulby and, uh, Hidden River, I don't think it's going to be Kevin that's, that's responding there. It's probably one of the South County deputies. But I'll reach out to the sheriff's office and find out who that is. And then the big question that I get asked all the time and stepping into a new role this last spring. Could have addressed it, how I might have addressed it in the past, but wanted to get a bigger overall view of it before I made any changes. So I'll be going around trying to put information out. Principles really have not changed in many years. I am changing the terminology that we're going to be using. The past was MED, uh, that was from my predecessor. He touted his business as creating that. It really is just different terminology. I'm going to let have, him have his feather in the cap for, for his work, um, and go back to what was more nationally recognized. So really it's giving the teachers, allowing teachers to make decisions that they've, they feel based on information that they've decided how to act. ELC is very similar to that MED, evacuate, lockdown or counter. The Houston uh, PD came up with one, run, fight, hide, and they uh, copyrighted it, but you'll see that one across the nation also. All of the principles are, are the same, basically. So evacuate, the best option to avoid a fight is not to be there when it happens, right? So evacuate would be my default in any situation is avoid the conflict, avoid not being there. But depending on the information, uh, you may not have that option. You may have to go into something like lockdown. Counter is really limited to the ability of the age group to be able to react to. Uh, we certainly would not teach students at, at any grade level to fight. But I know that there's abilities to distract and to try and then change it into evade or evacuate. So, uh, those are kind of the principles that we talk about. Again, we're, I'm getting away from the MED labeling. And then some of the vulnerabilities that, that I think we can recognize right now that I'm looking at, that I think we can work on. Lock doors. Always want more cameras. We have some schools that don't even have cameras, uh, getting all the schools to have vestigles. Uh, reunification plans, having been in Marysville during the Marysville Pilcheck shooting can tell you that it really is more than just saying reunification and putting one person in charge and saying, hey, you handle it. It's a very, very, very large project when that happens. And so putting some better plans in place for that. Parking lots, like to be able to control specifically the high school. Some of the controls on coming and going. So what we're looking at this next year is trying to shore up some of that perimeter. Uh, we are in the process of installing and testing a vape detector and seeing what that looks like. Trying to get two of them, one in a boys bathroom, one in a girls bathroom. We, we are putting a couple more cameras in a couple of vulnerable spots that we had at the high school. We're going back to prior to COVID parking passes so that we know one, that the students are actually our students. We did have a couple of incidents where we had non-students showing up. And so this gives us a better monitoring ability to manage that. And then, uh, a way of validating those that actually are leaving campus. That they're actually the early release students, not just, you know, leaving in the middle of the day and then coming back. I'd like to work on visitor identification badges, so that when they come in, they check in, they actually get a printed badge, they're walking around with that. Some of the schools are better than others about it. Down the road, be nice if the schools were kind of in a permanent lockdown position and it was all card access and that you got buzzed in. We had a better controls on who, who was coming and going and then consistency in locking those doors. So, um, that's just a change in behavior as we have to look at it down the road, I think. And then agreements with other entities. So, you know, there's the high school, there's a picture of that. The high school, if there were a major event, in fact, uh, there was one incident last year prior to me coming on board. Tester Road has one way in, one way out. And if there's a major event like there was that day, at least enough, it wasn't a major event, it was enough to cause some concern, so they locked it down. And they locked down Tester Road. And then you have families that are getting alerts that everything's going on, text messaging going on from students. And then if somebody really did hit the panic button, all of those parents want to come to the high school and pick up their kids. And that's not going to happen when the police department says, yeah, the road's closed. So there's alternatives that we're looking at to try and mitigate those things and create it. Want a safety plan for it and also, uh, a better ingress egress out of that. So we're talking with the state, we're, we're talking to some of our partner groups around their prison, uh, things like that to try and you know, direct or get some attention to that. So, uh, and always time, if I had more time. I'd take it and finding ways to try and pass that message, the, some of the things we just talked about to the teachers and, and getting them all on the same board and being able to answer all of their maybe fears or questions. So. That's it.
Thank you so much, Kelly. Any questions?
I think it's several. Um, I was going to add the board policy and I was wondering if, I'm sure you have, but, uh, to make sure that our board policy falls in line with what the current operating procedures are for emergencies and situations that occur.
Under the more recent policy revision, another emergencies one?
Yes.
Yes, it falls in line with what WASD recommends.
Okay, I would just wanted to make sure that if we have, uh, important operational things that need to be updated to help you, that be reflected in the policy. So that's that question was about, um, how many drills do we have, emergency drills and how do those, those look like?
Every school is required to do one a month. And it doesn't set parameters on which specific drills, but my goal is to is to start out with kind of an evacuation drills, that all the students really know. We had an earthquake, which is like, you know, there's a we're on the, the coast, so there's a certain percentage that says, hey, there, there's some likelihood of that happening, uh, that would probably be my default. It also ties in with all of the other emergencies. So that's kind of a base root one is the evacuation piece of that. And then understanding what a lockdown or lockout would look like. So starting with implementing those two things first. Uh, and then starting to do, you know, several of the cases this year is going to be like a tabletop exercise so that the students are participating along with the teachers, uh, and getting feedback for it. And what does that look like? And then the scenario change on them in conversation. And looking at it now in a different light, okay, hey, we, we couldn't evacuate because the intruder was at this door where before the information was they were on the other side of the building. And so they would, they would talk that out and see what that would look like.
Are you getting cooperation by the district and teachers and the principals?
Yes.
We just talked about in our, uh, formulating our, our goals for the year for the board, um, and safety and security was, uh, high on that priority list. One of the items I'm just cur- curious about is principals are to be certified on the command, incident command systems. Are they? That could be quite complicated for.
So ICS one hundred and ICS seven hundred, I believe, are the two that are required by principals.
What does that mean?
So ICS is a command structure the, the fire department actually came up with many years ago. As you move up in the ranks from the law enforcement and fireside, but like all firefighters have to go through it. And then as you get through it on the law enforcement side, you have to start going through those processes also. There's ICS one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred. I don't know about five, what do that looks like, or if it pertains to this particular environment. It's run by FEMA. Um, you can log into FEMA website and a lot of those courses are online. In some cases, they are a in-person command structure and it's a lot of tabletop exercises. The incident at, uh, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma City bombing, that, that particular topic is one they use as a sample for, hey, here's a major event. What does this look like? Where you talk about hot zones, warm zones, cold zones, uh, setting up a command structure, somebody has to check in and then somebody's keeping an overall map of where those folks are at, what the responsibilities are. It's kind of like the reunification when I was talking about, that in and of itself is almost its own commands setup. Uh, so there's a lot more to it, but I don't know the training records for the principals, so I can't say yes or no.
It's a lot of responsibility for the principals.
Yes.
They have in the first place, doing everything and anything, many superintendents and also to be, uh, incident commanders. But then I'm sure that also links into on the district side. On the district side, speaking of that, are we, uh, who would be your? So you'd be on the district side, do you have?
I'd be on the district side with superintendent. And then I know that, uh, the executive directors start getting patched into a lot of those next positions.
Okay. Good. Well, the safety for the student and staff is utmost importance and with things going on. So we appreciate your work. Per our earlier conversation, we'll probably have a follow-up meeting and get, uh, additional information and from you and ways to help you accomplish your goals and, uh, provide a safe environment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had one, uh, Kelly, last year in the fall and then in the spring, we, uh, going back to away from some of the, so facility usage instead of the security issues. Uh, field use issues and basketball courts and things like that. We had some of our local club teams and there was a lot of issues with trying to get that taken care of. Do we have, are we in communication with some of our club sports teams in the Monroe area and those types of things as we move into the school year?
Yeah, I know that, that Adam, Jenny takes a bulk of a lot of those things and then, uh, Ashley takes probably the bigger bulk of the communication where teams reach out to her, knowing her position as the athletic director. I know that we turned down some use and we had at least one football entity that had been up to high school that didn't have an agreement to use it and was asked to, to go through the process to be able to, to do that, to either get the approval.
Okay.
You, you know, you want to support all the local stuff. There's a part where if we're not involved, it's it's, there's, there's pros and cons to it. One, we're not involved and we just ask them to provide insurance. Two, if we're involved, we use kind of our insurance. But then they're on our insurance. So if something happens, then we have to, to think about the liability related with that.
I know in the past, we have asked for insurance and we've also prioritized, we want the local teams, that are the local club teams to really do that, because those are our students. You know, most of them that are doing our, our basketball leagues and our baseball leagues and our Bearcat stuff and things like that. Those are, those are Monroe kids. And so, and, and sometimes they're not, there are other kids as well, but those are the things that prioritize our students. And that's what a lot of those bonds were passed for, for those. For us to be able to have the facilities that we do and want to make sure that we're able to, we're able to accommodate that.
Yeah, I know that one of the, one of the football fields, I want to say it was Lindwood, don't quote me on that. Ended up doing some reconstruction. They didn't have access to it. They reached out. Uh, we denied the use of it. We wanted it more for our local folks.
Okay. Right. I just want to make sure that we weren't having any, um, bottleneck issues with that this year. Okay. Thank you so much. Any other questions?
Yeah, quick question. Um, so do you do like surprise visits or how do you test that these policies are being implemented?
So, uh, I get the notifications on all the drills. We have a alert system that also helps document it. Um, but if I can be there, I like to kind of go spot check it. I don't go to, I don't end up going to all of them. I don't necessarily get all the dates. As I've gone through the last few months, I, I've been slowly getting more and more access to uh, calendars and things like that are going on. So I should be a little better aware of this next year, but several times where I'll just, I'll go up and see if I can kind of take a look at it and then provide input in the aftermath of that and say, hey, did you guys think about an actual like hard piece of paper? Cause sometimes we rely on technology too much that I know in a, in a true emergency, running out the door. You may leave that technology behind. So there's times where a clipboard and a piece of paper might be a better answer. But, uh, yeah, I will do spot checks on all the schools. Thank you.
And if I may, uh, Kelly and I talked a little bit about this, but it's definitely something that I've seen done in other districts where there's a coordinated effort to support the person in Kelly's position to, um, assess the physical vulnerabilities on a regular basis. And then grade on a scale of eight F, you know, here, here's, here's where we assessed you and it's based on a, uh, uh, rubric that basically, basically looks for certain things, uh, on, on the outside of the building, the, the external physical vulnerabilities. And, and boy, does that fix the, uh, unlock doors thing pretty darn quickly. Um, and it, uh, so that's something that we'll bring back to maybe a study session, uh, kind of, uh, come up with a protocol or a procedure for that. Uh, but yeah, that's just to support Kelly, cause he's only one, one person up here, uh, to do that. So we'll, more to come on that.
Sean, that's awesome because that, that goes right in with our three A goal that we were talking about. I think that things that we can do to support Kelly, he's still in his first year doing this. And so there's a lot that he's getting access to as we go through our first cycle together in the school year. One of the things I'm wondering is, is there a way that we can continue to support him in keeping a record of updates of, uh, if he's not able to make to all of them, what drills are done? And we have a running record, what drills were done, what kind of drills were done for all of our ten different buildings? And then for our ten different schools, we have more than ten buildings. And then also just the certification cycles of, like, we keep certification cycles of our certificated staff and all those different types of things, all the licensing's that were all required in the different positions. So why can't we do that for our, if that's a requirement by law for our, our, our principals to have, say, hey, are we make sure that we're all up to date? Is that being a supportive thing? And we can just have a running record that that could be on a cloud drive that he can have access to, to make sure that he's able to support our building principals as best as possible.
So I, I just sent out, uh, a week and a half ago, a schedule for the drills. Here's what I would like to see for each of the months. I don't set the dates. It's up to the schools to set the dates. I don't know what they have on all their calendars, you know, if they have a testing day or something like that. So it's up to them to decide what day in the month to do that particular drill. Uh, and then I have, like I said, the easy alert system that we have should document all of that. And I can certainly keep you guys updated on, on the fact that the drills are going on, uh, and what the drills were. But, uh, any other additional support certainly would love to add into.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I'm assuming, and Victor would know this, he has a little more history. Um, but you are required to log all of your events and, um, I think sometimes the issue is, and I'll admit, when I was a principal for nine years, sometimes you can, uh, months can get away from you. So, uh, and you might skip a few months. So yeah, I, I'll, I'll be really curious about what kind of, what kind of support and accountability do we have to make sure that, uh, we're doing our due diligence with that.
Thank you so much, Kelly. Any other questions?
So whoops, sorry. So on some of these, I know that, you know, they're a little bit more straightforward. We're looking at, you know, donation of the vape detectors, right? Hoping to get two of them to try them out. And some of these, it's just time, right? Agreements with other community members, but for some of these, like cameras at schools, parking lot passers. time, right? Agreements with other community members. But for some of these light cameras at schools, parking lot passers, passes, visitor identification and card access. I'm looking, I'm wondering more specifically, what's it going to take to get there? What can we do? How can we help? Because I think there's more involved with those and I'd love to know what the more is so that we can get to that point.
I think behavior is the first one that's that's easy reachable and within our own asset access. Sorry. Some of the others may end up be in the long run, more like a bond issue or a levy issue or something like that where we say, you know, there's a significant dollar amount for, if we have a school that doesn't have any cameras, that's a pretty good chunk of, you know, assets involved in getting there. Card access, again, and now you're talking about wiring all through a building. There's some significant dollars associated with that. So those are probably better off answered maybe by Victor or by Brenda on the finance side of it. So it may be in a bond type situation. But what can we do now to start preparing for that, getting that word out that we are, you know, prioritizing those types of things and access. And so that when it does come up, we have the the community supporting that. A lot of the other stuff really is some behavior issues that I think during COVID maybe changed. I know when my kids went to school there, for example, the parking permits. We're going to start out of the gate with parking permits and, and when they try and leave at lunch, that there's somebody down there going, hey, where are you going? And it's a matter of changing the behavior a little bit.
Thank you for that, Kelly. I just really appreciate the plan that you've brought forward. I know in our workshop, we were just talking about, you know, we're going to be working on stuff and getting things going. And this is really kind of a a good list with some things that seem to be a little easier that we can do, but also some wishlist items that, you know, maybe with more of the help of Brenda and Victor that we can really look at and see, okay, what can we do? How can we make that work? So I'm, I'm really excited about this. I'm really glad that you're here. I think you bring a lot and just help so much. So I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Our next presentation is on lead and water. A third presentation for this evening will be information on lead and water remediation with Victor Scarpelli, our executive director of support services and operations. And Adam, Adam's going to do it. Adam, Danny, director of facilities.
Sorry. So the State Department of Health has completed lead testing at most of our sites. They break the results into three categories. Sorry, lead and water testing. So they break it into three categories, zero to five parts per billion, five to fifteen and above fifteen. So fixtures testing at five or less, we don't do any action. And then anything above five, we have to have some sort of action. What we've done with those fixtures is just shut them off. We could, we could make them hand washing only. Sorry, let me just finish reading. So per the, per the law, I'm presenting our plan to provide notice and opportunity for the public and also there's a bond or excuse me, a grant available to reimburse this or part of it. So anyway, those medium and high level fixtures, we've chosen to just shut them off. There's not too much disruption to any of the classes except for Frank Wagner. We ended up bringing in a water cooler. So kids could get drinking water, but they can wash their hands other places and other than that, it hasn't been a big interruption. Some kitchens, they've had to kind of move around a little bit. But other than that, we're just going to replace them. I don't see any reason to do filter systems or like full removal or anything like that. So I guess any questions? Sorry.
About, about how many fixtures?
So we're finding a lot of it. It's not just fixtures. It's actually can be valve stops as well. We're about fifty valve stops, about thirty faucets and six water fountains. Approximately what we have right now. There's one site left. We're hoping to get that tested here real soon and then get our retesting done. We've done some of the remediation already. Like I said, we need to get it approved before we fully move forward. But we've bought all the parts. I'm hoping you guys give me the go ahead and we'll jump on it.
And I had a conversation with Victor earlier to make sure I understand this correctly. And it's not that we have this big degradation of our facilities. It's that the state has changed its regulations.
Yeah.
And so that means now the threshold has been lowered.
Well, the states made it a requirement to actually test now, like a legitimate requirement, a law. And they started that twenty twenty one and we're actually early adopters of it. But they're just now getting around to testing. There were a lot of, a lot of issues they had to work out.
And we think that by replacing some of these parts, this is not a whole plumbing issue of like piping. This is just replacing fixtures. We're able to actually be within compliance of that threshold.
Yeah, we're compared to some other districts, we're in really good shape. It seems like what we're doing. So we know based on our suppliers and our resources out there, like we know these lead, these stops contain lead that we're replacing and the fixtures that we're replacing do contain lead. And so based on those numbers that we're getting and then, you know, the room next door with different fixtures isn't getting, you know, that reading, we're pretty confident that we don't have any sites with a full, you know, lead in the actual pipe type issue.
And then you mentioned that you guys have already purchased the equipment and then it would just be the labor. What would be the cost analysis of something like this, trusting to finish it out?
Well, right now we've actually spent about nineteen thousand on parts and some like call them incidentals. The grant should cover most, if not all of it. I wasn't clear, like we're replacing the supply lines and it wasn't clear if they're going to actually recover us for that, but that's about a thousand dollars for all of it so far. And we do have one other site, like I said, left, but they were tested six years ago. And so I'm not expecting very much there.
Okay. And then what does our timeline look like? Are we able to get a lot of this done before? I know you guys have already started some of it. Are we able to get this done before school starts?
Well, the we, not all of it, no. There will be some classrooms with no water. But we also have to wait for them to come back and retest before we can put it back into full service. So.
So we have classrooms that have kids that need water, don't have water. What is, what does that timeline look like? At finishing it, replacing it, having it tested to where it's usable again?
I'm hoping to have it all said and done in early October. I'm all dependent on the Department of Health coming out and actually retesting. But for the most part, if kids need water, they can, you know, there's a bathroom nearby or drinking fountain in the hallway or we've brought, like I said, we brought in a water cooler at one site just because it was inconvenient for them to get water somewhere else.
Sort of like at minimal cost, that's reimbursed with the minimal disruption for a few weeks.
Yeah. Okay. And like I said, we could change some of these to hand washing only, but for the most part, the sites that usually it's the elementary that have the fixtures in their classrooms and they're the ones who are the most vulnerable. I'd rather not risk them accidentally drinking the water. So I'd rather make them have to walk across the building, well, not across the building, but walk a little ways, you know? And then the grant, I don't know if I'm too early on this, but I'd like to get approval to proceed with the grant. There's quite a bit of money, but once it's gone, it's gone. So I don't know if I need to come back later. That might be more of a brand a question or okay, it's one of the I grants all. Oh, never mind. So.
Well, thanks for being on top of this, Adam. I know you've been on top of so many things in this district since you took this position and we are so appreciative of that, of you helping keep our buildings up and running and helping to keep our students safe as well in that. So definitely appreciate that. And then also applying for the grant to help and save us money for other things as well. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Adam. Thanks. All right. Next on the docket, our fourth and last presentation for the evening will be from Chris Cronus. Come on down. Executive Director of Elementary Education and Categorical Programs to go over the multilingual learner, English language learner program and some of the changes in our in our, our lingo and the acronyms that the state has adopted as well. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks for having me. Wait for a presentation to get posted again. Thank you. Thank you, Jesse. All right. So purposes of presentation provide board some insight to our M L L students experience in school and share how we are responding, what we're doing. So starting out with our commitments, you know, when we serve M L students, it really speaks to these three commitments, I think, more heartedly than anything else. Maybe special education would be another one, but they're all of our students and in order to provide access to our M L students, we will need to make absolutely certain that we are serving them in their classrooms. And that is one of the shifts that we are making. So to address specifically what Director Campbell just referenced, I wanted to talk about this just for a second. I know some of the board members have seen this before. Not everyone perhaps has. So we've shifted our language from the use of the term English language learner to a multilingual learner. And the reason why is because well, English language learner didn't encompass what it needed to at the time with what we knew about language acquisition at the time. It doesn't, it didn't recognize the student's assets. It just looked at the kid through this kind of deficit lens. They don't speak English. We have to teach them English and that's not exactly what we do anymore. One of the, one of our goals as a district is to improve our kids' sense of belonging. It's going to make, it's going to impact everything. If we improve our students' sense of belonging, it will impact their attendance, it will impact their grades, it'll impact their, their connection to community and school. And when we look at kids through an asset-based lens, that is one where we recognize the student is learning multiple languages. That is their primary language, the language they're learning at home with their family and they're learning English in our schools. We're able to recognize and show the student that what they bring to our schools is an asset, right? What they, the fact that they are, they are multilingual is an asset and we haven't approached it that way. All right. It's not really been considered that. It's, it's been considered a deficit because they don't speak English and that's not how we want to look at our kids. And the other really important part of this is that research shows that students participate in, in, excuse me, who get to use their primary language at school do better. There they feel more connected to home and school and they're able to utilize what they know from their primary language while acquiring a new language. Okay. So we have seen a pretty significant growth in our, with our M L population over the last few years. And that, that growth has been seen largely at the secondary level. We saw a huge bump last year at the high school, for example. And it's been challenging there because the high school is also wrestled with staffing issues. We haven't had an M L teacher there consistently. We, we have someone there now which we're really thrilled about. And we have two social studies teachers who are eel endorsed that are going to take over newcomer classes. So we're actually creating a newcomer class this coming school year to serve our students who are, you know, new to country, don't really, don't even have survival English under their belt yet. Breakdown of our kids across our schools. You could see the largest number we serve is at Frank Wagner, followed by Monroe High School and then Park Place. But we've got kids across all our schools. It's, it doesn't matter where we are. We serve M L students everywhere in our school district. So there's a lot of kids. How do we fund it? What are we doing? One of the things that we do, I do every year is I apply for one of the non-competitive grants that falls within the categorical umbrella. And in this case, T BIP or Transitional Bilingual Instructional Program, it's the acronym, funds our district this coming school year, about one four point four million dollars. And that's that those dollars are used to pay for certificated staffing, speed for administrative support, and it's, it's there to pay for classified staffing. And something I want to speak to regarding this total dollar amount is that it's not sufficient to maintain what we've had in place. Okay, I was asked to balance our budget last year. I did. And because we were over, we were using what I thought at the time was S R funds to cover overages because we did increase F T E among our classified staff to kind of help with the COVID hangover that we're all dealing with and trying to shore up some learning for kids. But we were using enrollment stabilization. I talked with Brenda about that earlier today. Regardless of total dollar amount that we've been investing, the, we are making a shift to the way in which we actually deliver services. And we did reduce because we had to balance our categorical budgets. And at the same time, we are making shifts in the, in the way in which we are, are serving kids overall, which addressed really the, the reduction in, in dollar amount we're spending, but also focuses on how to best serve kids through an evidence-based lens. So we offer two models in our district. One is referred to as dual language, the other supportive mainstream. And I'm going to talk a little bit about both. So dual languages operates at a Frank Wagner. We have students both in both monolingual and dual language programs at Frank Wagner. We've developed a framework for dual language for our district. It's still in draft form. We're about done with it, but we need to do all of our edits and get that posted. It operates strictly at a Frank Wagner now, but we are moving toward a model where, where we go K eight. What it looks like the middle school, we're still trying to work out. We're working with Park Place on that. We will be. We haven't really engaged too much with that. We have a dual language task force that we're required to initiate with, that's, that's driven through some state-funded competitive grant dollars we call qualified for in the past. And we're doing that regardless of compliance needs. It's just good practice. So we've got meetings that are ready to go set up for the community where we're going to talk more with folks about what this can look like and how we can better do it. And we have seen some pretty significant improvements in how we're doing it and changes. And they've resulted in some really amazing outcomes actually. And really excited about some of the stuff that's going on at Frank Wagner, something to be proud of, some of the district can hang their hat on. And the reason why we do dual language is because it actually generates, it's the best impact for M L students. Hands down, it's not even close. I'm going to talk a little bit about what that looks like. I've shown this to, to the board before. I see Director Campbell nodding his head. But I'm going to go through it line by line here, because when you look at it at first glance, it's, it's a lot to take in if you're not familiar with the, the research and this particular graph. So in the past, most programs, regardless of where you were in this, in, in the U S, were operating a pullout model where you have an M L teacher who identifies these six kids based on home language survey we did at the beginning of each school year. And says, okay, these kids need service. I'm going to grab them, pull them out and provide them additional support outside the classroom. Well, we already know based on all the research out there, and this actually falls neatly under the umbrella, umbrella of the inclusion work that's been happening in our district with special education, that pulling a kid out of the classroom doesn't work. Okay, they miss out on core instruction and there are some real issues with the kid maintaining that sense of belonging that should exist and keeping them in their classroom. So we needed to pivot a little bit. Now, if you look at the top two lines, all right, the very top line is two-way dual language. Two-way dual language yields the best outcomes for kids. Because if you look at the Y axis, the average performance of English-speaking students, dual language kids will, if this is done well, outperform monolingual kids. And it's not even close. Right? So we know this works. It's just the fidelity, the implementation and maintaining that fidelity over time is a really challenging thing to do and we're, we're getting better at it. The, the team at Frank Wagner has been doing this with, without a ton of support over the last 10 years. And we've been really, this last couple of years, we've been trying to push more support their way. We've sent them to conferences. We've provided more P D. We had a consultant come in to support this work and develop the framework with us. We've done a lot of work with this team. We've purchased thousands of dollars worth of Spanish-only books in support of literacy, Spanish literacy in the classroom. So we're really moving that direction and maintaining the support that they really need to, to get the kids what they need. The second green line is one-way dual language. The difference between the two is that in a two-way dual language classroom, you've got kids who are kind of mixed pretty heterogeneously between monolingual, that is, monolingual for both sides. In our case, English and Spanish. A one-way dual language has primarily the, would be primarily in our case, Spanish-speaking students only in that, in that classroom. Okay? The blue line you see, and for those who may not be able to see blue, the third line from the top that arcs and runs into that number forty there, that's transitional bilingual. That is supportive mainstream. So that is the, the, the second best we can do outside of a dual language program. All right. That is what we are doing in Monroe in all of the other classrooms that we serve. And what that is is this. It can access grade level content and English language development by participating in their mainstream classrooms. We have been doing this, but we need to pivot more and do more of it. So one of the things we're doing is increasing the frequency with which our M L teachers are going to be able to support the classroom teachers, which is a real shift in practice, because in the past, we've asked our M L teachers to which is a real shift in practice, because in the past, we've asked our ML teachers to primarily just support the kids. But in this case, what we really want to see happen is our ML teachers supporting the adults, because we need to, we need to really address the needs of our students in a much, much broader spectrum than we are, and we have been. So in order to do this, uh, we had to rethink really what the, what the position has been, and I apologize for the font size and all the information that's on there, and there's uh, the uh, the, the presentation was updated since um yesterday. And the reason why I'm sharing this, the way it looks, is that last June, uh, I myself, our teacher on special assignment, Robin Lampers, who um, who does a ton of work behind the scenes, it's a pretty extraordinary person, ran a meeting here where we invited all the ML teachers down, and we talked through what this job could look like if it existed. And they came up with this, right? The job really does fall into three, these three categories, there's some compliance stuff, we have to do the testing, we have to make sure that we know which kids are, should be served, there are civil rights issues involved. We have advocacy, right, um, making sure that, you know, um, families are heard, students' voices are heard. Really promoting the use of English language development strategy in each classroom. And then a collaborator, that's really getting down to the nuts and bolts of what this looks like on a daily basis in classroom and working with the teachers, our classroom teachers through that process. So they know where and when to plug in some of these strategies to get the most out of our kids when they're engaging in lessons. Okay, um, we are in the middle of a bargain, I can't say any more than that, um, but we are hopefully moving this direction soon. And once that's all established, the language is clear, we'll be reaching out to the general teachers, letting them know what's going on and, and taking next steps from there. So how are our kids doing? Well, better than last year, still got a long, long way to go. The, in twenty-one, twenty-two, seven hundred and seventeen over seven hundred and forty kids tested. Only thirty-four of them, roughly five percent of that population met standard, and of those thirty-four, fifteen of them were kindergarten students. I say that because the earliest students acquire language fastest, because all of our kindergarten students are English language learners. It doesn't matter if they are um uh coming from a monolingual, English-speaking household, or a monolingual, Spanish-speaking household. It's the case for the majority of our kids. This year, however, this past year, um, seven hundred and fifty-four out of eight hundred and ninety-one students tested, forty-seven met standard, six point two percent of the population, and um only twelve kindergartners made standard. So we're reaching more kids across more space, and we beat the state average. Then, again, these numbers are really low, I realize that, and we are improving. But with the adoption of WEDA as the testing framework, um, it's been a real struggle for school districts across the state, we're not alone. Um, and I'm actually pretty proud of the fact that we were able to beat the state average, it's still not good enough, and everybody knows this, alright, but we are on the right track. And anecdotally, I'll, I'll share this as well, um, Frank Wagner's SBA data is pretty darn impressive. When we, uh, we have some pre and post-COVID kind of numbers, and pre-COVID, only roughly between eight and eleven percent of our students at Frank Wagner met standard. This past year, um, data's not completely cleansed yet, uh, so that's why I didn't put on a slide. But roughly forty-four percent of our kids met standard. That is a heck of a leap, and we're really proud of that, that team, the teachers, the families, the kids, they, there's a major shift happening in that building that we're seeing, and it's pretty extraordinary to see. So next steps are really supporting the transition of our ML teachers and the adoption of coaching practices ultimately, provided we are able to, you know, work through um everything with MEA, which I'm confident we will, we've been going on uh back and forth with for a little while now, and we're really, really close. We're gonna maintain and sustain ongoing professional development around the, around the adoption of universal learning practices that support all kids. And uh sustain ongoing professional learning around, uh, I said that twice. And uh sustaining some professional learning for our teachers around how best to support our students as well. Any questions?
So when you talk about having to reduce your budget, right, and kind of bring it down, what did that include, what things were you having to eliminate or just become, you know, a little bit more crafty of how you did it?
Yeah, um, well, the, unfortunately, the, the biggest hit was with our classified staff. That's where it went.
So what's the difference between using S R dollars to now in the classified staff? Like how many um M L L classified staff, support staff do we have now?
Uh, off the top of my head, classified for support staff, off the top of my head, I can't tell you, I don't know. I can, I can find out, I'll get back to you on that number. But it was a pretty significant reduction, we're, we're talking like, oh man. Several, let's see, well, I mean, the high school alone took the, one of the biggest hits. And that was really hard, because the two paras up there that were, that were supporting our students, uh, were doing it almost exclusively by them, exclusively by themselves. So that was, that was a very hard thing to do, and, and I know um, that was, uh, that's something we, we are actually trying to shore up a little bit because of the hit. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, I will get back to you about it. But what I will say is the strategy behind it was to make sure that we didn't take too much away from elementary, because of early intervention. The majority of our students we serve in ML um uh district-wide come in early and stay. We had a bu- a bump last year at the high school, which was different, very, very different than anything we experienced before. But we do focus more on earlier intervention and support of moving our kids out of uh ML services within five years. Because once they hit that five-year mark, then they turn into what's referred to um as long-term E Ls. And the long-term E L uh experience is pretty stifling. We see kids uh really not do well academically over a long period of time. So we did shift resources that direction, there were losses at every building with classified staff, it was not specific to the high school or the middle schools. So uh leaders in learning took a big hit as well.
So what, how much did you have to cut out of the budget? And is there a way that we can look at, I don't know, finding, finding more funding somehow to put it back into this budget so that we have that support staff for our multi-language learners?
So, yeah, so um, I can, I'll get you the number about how much we cut. I will say one thing to that point. The shift away from utilizing classified staff the way we had in the past was, was also intentional. The supportive mainstream model is such that we want kids in classrooms being supported by their classroom teacher because we know that's what the research says. They'll best learn, that's the way the, the research says they'll best learn. So um, one of the things that we didn't do was uh make, well, one of the things I did do was make sure that our certificate staff weren't affected. There were small reductions amongst certificate staff based on uh the contract counts that we use to drive FTE. Outside of that, pardon me, outside of that, um, uh, FTE was maintained for certs because we're trying to uh maintain the integrity of a supportive mainstream model, but.
Yeah, so a couple of things, one, as Chris mentioned, we're looking at the secondary level right now at potentially bringing back one FTE there. The issue is just simply uh, we're not, I mean, we're running out of the S R dollars now, we're down to uh two point seven million, two point six million left. And uh, it would have to come from somewhere. So either you could decide to uh put some more positions back into the supporting ML students, and it would reduce the fund balance by that much by the end of the year, or us being direct to find something to spend less on, to spend more there. We knew it was coming, I mean, it was, well, you'll maybe be given a little more advanced warning next spring when we're going through a similar process. But we had so much money coming in from the federal government, every district in the US, and though the, the, excuse me, a lot of those money went into uh helping our students who are, who are struggling the most, the most true and true and meet as well, and now there's this big funding cliff in every district, I think, across the US is having this conversation right now, it doesn't make it easy. We were used to a higher level of, of support, but what I do appreciate is the strategy that Chris just described. In spite of that, the attempt is to keep our students in the classrooms with their peers and running that cons- uh, uh, consult model, if you will. So uh, but more to come on that, uh, for sure, Molly.
Just to add on to Sean's comment, Sean asked me to work on this, and I've worked on it and haven't got a chance to get back to him, but Brenda and I got a chance to talk, and we are specifically looking at making sure transitional kindergarten, as we applied for, is funded. And we are specifically looking at our projected enrollment to make sure that that comes in where it's expected, and we wanted to look at those two factors with the idea of, of moving forward with putting some of those um pair educator back at the second, hours back at the secondary level. So we're, we're close on learning more about both of those factors.
Chris, can you put over, Jesse, can you put up the graph again? So Wayne Thomas and Virginia Collier, they've been the standard for years, right? With, I think a lot of people don't fully understand, but I mean, I'd look at the copyright on their two thousand and two, this has been dated, it's over twenty years.
Oh, it's over twenty years, and it's been replicated too.
Yes, and it's, and it, and it works, I've, I've lived this out in my classroom and the districts that I've worked in before, and one of the questions I have, I guess, is we have our two-way dual language program that we've been working on retooling, and we're building that in as we go, like next year, we're throwing first grade, and as we go into the ninety, ten to the fifty-fifty, we hit the fifth grade, and I think that that is the, the detriment of the conversation that this graph created so much was then everybody stops at the end of elementary school, right as those kids are ready to cross that threshold, and just blow way out of the water, and, and just the day, the, the world is, becomes their oyster. So as you guys begin to have conversations with specifically Park, just because those are the most of the students for middle school level, and we look at budgeting, I guess that is one of the questions I want us to be very aware of, of how we can be very intentional in continuing this on in the middle school, because what I, what I would hate for us to do is a disservice to our kids is we're finally getting them to go this way, and what's gonna happen is if we have to try and move to transitional, is we're gonna plateau them, because we're not gonna service them the way that they need to. And if we can do things, and again, it depends on certificate, certificate staff that you can do for this, but you know, if we're able to integrate language arts uh for both their primary language and their secondary language, Spanish in this case, and, and it becomes very easy then at that point, you can do a lot of things with seals of biliteracy and high school credit and things like that, that actually really promote it for kids moving into the high school, and you can create almost a bigger trajectory for them, those types of ways, and I know we already have a lot of that going at the high school, so it makes it really easy for us, they're not just, how are we building up, but how are we coming together at the middle school level so that it doesn't just taper off for those kids, so as we move up, that is a, that is a conversation I would love for us to see continue, because what I don't want us to see is we have this trajectory for these kids, and as soon as they get to the middle school level, like, oh, we're gonna move to a different model now, and then these kids' performance, their abilities levels are just going to taper off. And it will then go back to, we're talking about equity gaps in their abilities.
Yeah, and I, no, I appreciate you saying that, and also, I'll also share that, you know, Dr. Parmley at, at the high school has done some pretty sure, and I work with uh a lot of our kids who are and have uh demonstrated not just bilingualism, but by literacy, uh, and promoted it, and um, I mean, the kids are crushing it. Like, it's really impressive, I mean, just blowing the AP test out of the water, um, doing some really remarkable stuff, so we know we can. It's, it's a matter of maintaining that trajectory and.
What is the biggest obstacle for us moving forward to, to really fill what's gonna happen in the middle school age?
Uh, the middle school master schedule. Middle school master schedules are notoriously challenging because they are very rigid, and not, not because of, you know, uh, not for any other reason than, than the funding model. You know, we have X F T E to fill Y spots, and uh you've got, you know, X or Z F T E of students, and that's a, that's a very clear formula that um requires more of our teachers who may not necessarily be or have the skills to deliver content in Spanish, in our case. But the, the middle school master schedule is by and far the biggest challenge, and that would not be specific to Monroe. We've already looked into this quite a bit. There are middle schools doing it, and there are middle schools, however, that are um uh, that have uh that have been doing it for a longer time in, in places where uh there's just more access to folks who, who can. Like, I think of Highline School District, for example, Highline School District has like a hundred and twenty languages or something that, that represented. So the, the, the pool from which they're pulling staff, um, they're more diverse, and they're, uh, they're, more of them are uh multilingual.
So this comes to um maybe a possibility of how do we, how do we look at overcoming this obstacle, it becomes almost like a recruiting thing as well, as, as we, as we have natural attrition, and we bring on more staff, how do we bring people who are ML certified?
Yeah, and I, I think it's multifaceted, but that's one of the levers we need to pull, for sure.
And the other piece, if, if I may, uh, districts, it's very common for districts to, and Brenda can speak to this, to employ an additive model, right, Brenda? So it's like, we're adding, 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 and then when someone brings up a concern that, gee, wouldn't it be good to have the staffing at the middle level to do what Chris is talking about? The answer often is, well, we don't really have the money. So the challenge for the board and our working together and with district staff and building staff will be to truly identify areas that we need to stop spending money in, to free up dollars to spend money in areas that have been identified as a priority of the, of the board. It's not easy, uh, that's why districts just tend to add more and more, we need more money, more money, more money, when we, you know, we know we have the money, we, we just need to make sure our spending aligns with the priorities that we're gonna identify together through our planning process.
Do we currently have a pre-K, is that referred to as transitional kindergarten?
Yeah, um, uh, just to confuse you more, it'd be transition to kindergarten now, I guess they renamed it again. But uh, we have, we have a development preschool, and then we have transition to kindergarten, and we're opening a new classroom this coming school year.
Uh, about how many kids are in that?
Well, uh, we've got uh.
Or how many classes?
Yeah, ru- roughly twenty at Frylands, we're gonna be opening another classroom of twenty, and there's a waiting list. Early childhood education is a need in this community, um, a pretty significant one, and um, the uh, the, the list is long.
Have you, uh, most of the board went to a ground opening, Boys and Girls Club for early childhood education, do you work in conjunction with them, or they have certain requirements for their income levels? You were that at school district, uh, or connect?
Yeah, there's, there's several different uh um opportunities for families in this community. One of them's E cap, which is a, a, a program that's specific to um very low-income families that need, uh, that need childcare. There's Kids Country, there's, there's a couple, uh, there's a couple of different um preschool opportunities for families here. We, we, we do work with folks, not directly, uh, mainly just transitioning kids from their experience in their preschool program into our schools. But one of the things that uh, sort of what we're, we're talked about uh very openly is, is what we can do around early childhood education and, and potentially looking at other opportunities that might be out there to partner with the community and to grow this, because we know that the early, earliest intervention yields the best outcomes.
Yes, the, the more I, more I learn and understand about it, it's, it's crucial to step into education and then continue on. Thank you, and thank you for explaining all the acronyms as you were going along, I appreciate that.
Alright, thank you so much, Chris, I appreciate your time.
Alright, thank you.
Check, just like the army, we're always changing acronyms on everybody, same thing in education. Alright, moving on to section five, communications, consideration of donations, we have a donation received from grocery out, grocery outlet. But I have Director Barnes read on this, because this is an initiative that you got going for us, and so I'd love for you to share about the donation, and then maybe how we can continue to partner with that.
Yes, so this donation um is for the sole and express purpose of the purchase of books for the Monroe School District Libraries, and it's in the amount of eighty-eight dollars. So in the Celebrate the World Committee, after I first came onto the board, and we were talking about how to get books that just celebrate our world and showcase the wonderful diversity in it, and that our kids have these available at their fingertips, just refreshing our libraries, doing all of that. One of the things I thought about with Grocery Outlet being such a huge support and sponsor of different things in the community, I was able to go to them and ask them if they'd be willing to partner um to help fund some of these books, and they graciously accepted, and we were able to give out cards for any purchase made, they'd give five percent of the entire purchase back to the Monroe School District so that we could purchase more books. I was able to sit down with Dan, and we actually got to spend this money, which was incredibly fun as we went shopping, just highlighting different pieces of history from. Just highlighting different pieces of history from the Trail of Tears to the writing of the Star Spangled Banner and everything in between. We had such a fun time doing it. And when these books come in, I'm really looking forward to sitting down with her and helping. Log them in so that they can get out to our schools so that our students will be able to use these books this coming school year. But something like this, they've offered to partner again for this. And so moving forward, this is absolutely something that we can continue so that we can continue to bring in those wonderful books. But I will let you know as soon as that happens. And if anyone has any other ideas as well of different ways that they'd love to partner with the school district as far as how to, you know, get more books. I know we've received different grants as well from the Monroe Public Schools Foundation. And I know Snow Isle Skills Center or not Snow Isle Library will donate books as well. But any other ideas or any donations or anything from the public, we always need more books for our students.
All right, any questions about that? Awesome. Thank grocery outlet for their partnership with our school district. Next, section five point zero two student representative Laura is not here yet and. But we will have, I think, both of our representatives here come in September as we get kicked off for the school year. I'm sure enjoying those last days of summer as they get that and we'd love to hear their experiences as we kick off the school year. Moving on to agenda item five point zero three, public comment. We do have one public comment. And go ahead and read this, Heather, and then I'll have you get started here. It says, public comment forums received after the meeting has started. Will be saved for the following meeting. We welcome and value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance. Of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is the policy of the Monroe School District to promote mutual respectability and orderly conduct among district employees, parents and the public. We ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Designated speaker for a group is asked to keep comments to five minutes. If you have a personal personnel concern, any staff member in the room can help you with how to go forward with that complaint with a complaint about personnel. The board does not respond to public comments during the business meeting. Please note the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a sign of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, targets a protected class or exceeds the time limit. As the board pres- as well, Vice President, I determine the appropriateness of all such rulings. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone. If attending the meeting virtually, please join as a panelist, allow. Video and unmute your microphone, our first speaker, and I think our only speaker tonight, now that I've gone through all of that. Get through it. Heather, please state your name and your relationship to the school district.
Hi, my name is Heather Young and I'm still a parent of two students in the school district. Before I get to what I wanted to talk about, though, I just wanted to highlight for all of you, just to call back to your mind. Chris mentioned that the total number of staff that were were being. Reduced because of the change in M L L was more than one per school. So that means more than eleven. And this after the 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 push was made around the levy renewal. Not to cut staff that in renewing the levy that we would not need to cut staff. And so you now have a communication and an expectation gap. I'm not saying that what he has has talked to you about isn't the right move. I'm saying it hasn't been communicated appropriately and expectation set. And the community is already very upset about what they're hearing about cuts after we were told there would not be cuts because we renewed the levy. So you have some, you have some work to do. As anyone who has had a successful career in tech can assert. We have a lot of experience in setting goals and K P I's. So as you as you as you guys work on setting these goals that you were talking about in the workshop. There's a few things that I would love for you to consider. Make sure that as you set these consistent goals that you publish them. Hold yourselves accountable and publish what your goals are. Make sure you're defining them and defining how they're being measured, because I can tell you, as I'm sure James can. That if you set a goal, there's lots of ways that we can play with spreadsheets and show that we achieved a goal. Even if it wasn't as it was originally intended. So make sure you're publishing your scorecard. Your focus had really been on setting goals for others, like attendance and achievement and teachers. Don't just set goals for others. Set goals for the board itself and hold yourselves accountable too. Make sure that you have interim milestones, which will help you understand. Whether or not you're what you're doing will get you where you want to go before it's too late for you to make changes and achieve the goal. And and absolutely, don't forget the smart eagles. I appreciate that very much superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. All right, no other comments. Moving on to our business section section of our session. Jenna item six point zero one, resolution number. Ten twenty twenty three. I see that in the subject. I'm like, thank you. There there it is. Number ten twenty twenty three. There's recommended action that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve resolution. Number ten for the adoption of the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fiscal school year. I'm going to pull up the resolution and read that. And then we can entertain a motion for that. It says the resolution of the Board of Directors of Monroe School District number one oh three. Stowish County, Washington, fixing and determining funds appropriations adopting the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget. For the for the year budget plan summary and the four year enrollment projection and providing for other related matters. If remember, we had our hearing last meeting in order to go over this. So this is the resolution for that. Be resolved by the Board of Directors of Monroe School District number one oh three, Stowish County, Washington, as follows. Section one findings and determinations. The Board of Directors, the Board of Monroe School District number one oh three, Stowish County, Washington. The district takes note of the following facts and hereby makes the following findings and determinations. A pursuant to R C W twenty eight A five oh five oh four oh. The district has completed the budget for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fiscal year and published electronic notice of the same on its website. The twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget includes, among other things, a complete financial plan of the district for the ensuing twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fiscal year. And a summary of the four year budget plan that includes a four year enrollment projection. B pursuant R C W twenty eight A five oh five oh six oh. The board shall adopt the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget on or before August thirty first, twenty twenty three. Prior to adoption of the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget, the board shall meet and conduct a public hearing, which we already done. To allow any person to be heard or for or against any part of the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget. The four year budget plan or any proposed changes to uses of enrichment funding under R C W twenty eight A five oh five two forty. AKA school programs and operations levy. C, the board following notice thereof being published in a newspaper of general circulation within the district. Conducted a public hearing uh on August fourteenth, twenty twenty three, in accordance with the requirements of R C W twenty eight A five oh five oh six oh. For the purpose of adopting the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget. Section two, fixing and determining funds appropriations, adoption of the twenty three, twenty four budget, four year budget summary and four year enrollment projections. And this is where everybody wants to know. The board hereby fixes and determines the appropriation from each fund. Contained in the twenty three, twenty four budget as follows, general fund, one hundred and five million, twenty two thousand, two, six hundred and twenty dollars. Capital funds project, one million dollars even. Transition vehicle fund, one million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Debt service fund, seven million, two hundred and ninety three thousand, seven hundred and twenty five dollars. Associated student body fund, one million, one hundred and thirty three thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. The board hereby adopts the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget and the four year budget plan summary and the four year enrollment projection. And a doc and appropriations is fixed and determined above, all of which are on file with the district and incorporated herein by this reference. Almost like you guys. Section three, generally general authorization ratification secretary of the board, that's our superintendent, the president of the board. A district chief financial officer and the appropriate officers of the district are hereby further authorized to take all other action to do. All other things consistent with this resolution and to execute all the documents necessary to effectuate the proposition provisions. Of this resolution and all actions heretofore taken taken in furtherance. These are not words in my everyday vocabulary. There have and not inconsistent with the provisions of this resolution are hereby ratified. And confirmed in all its respect, adopted by the Board of Directors of Monroe School District one oh three, Stowish County, Washington. At a regular open public meeting thereof, of which due notice was given and required by law held this twenty eighth day of August, twenty twenty three. The following directors being present in favor in favor of the resolution. So now we can entertain a motion and we can discuss that. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve resolution ten for the adoption of the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fiscal year budget.
Second. Second, there is a motion in the second discussion.
Okay, I'll kick this one off. So Brenda, if you can help us out here. So in the resolution, we have your nice table that talks about general fund, one hundred and five million, twenty two thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. We talked a lot about this number. And then we have capital projects fund, transportation vehicle fund, debt service fund and associated student body fund. So my question is with these numbers here in the one, two, three, four, four. Categories below general fund, are those things that are already accounted for in the general fund? What are the revenue streams for these four items down here?
Okay, the district has five individual separate funds. So the hundred and five thousand, a hundred and five million is the general fund. And in addition to the general fund, we have four additional fund, which was the capital projects, transportation, debt service and the A S B or associated student body. In our budget hearing that we had last meeting. The first three quarters of our presentation was just the general fund. And the difference, the variances from year to year in both program and object for just the general fund. And then we went on to the one page summaries for the remaining four. And the revenue sources for those for those four additional funds are exclusively for those funds. For example, capital projects fund, we talked about how the revenue was going to be. Got it on here, but I can't see it. Three hundred and thirty four thousand. And we talked about how our levy has our our levy has ended. For the capital projects, we also talked about how the bond money and state match funds. Once the Sky Valley project is complete, we have exhausted those. And we talked about that million dollars being spent primarily on increasing classroom spaces. Or in effect, using mitigation funds. If we had the ability to to do that next year, the million dollars was essentially capacity to do that. Transportation vehicle fund, we talked about how the revenue source for the transportation vehicle fund was the state depreciation schedule. We also have investment earnings on that money. And so although we get roughly, I think I budgeted around seven hundred thousand in revenue. We're planning on spending one million, four hundred and fifty. I build that up because we have buses that are on order this year. That as it turns out, we will not receive by Thursday, big surprise. But we will not receive that by Thursday. So I had to build the. The revenue, the expenditure capacity up to not only pay for buses that we're going to purchase next year. But to pay for the first buses that we're not going to receive by the mandatory deadline of the thirty first of this month, which is Thursday. And so we left less than a hundred thousand in transportation with our budget. But because our beginning fund balance is going to be higher because we're not paying for those buses. Our fund balance at the end of next year will be higher than what's in the budget that we're adopting this evening. Debt service fund, we talked about how the revenues from that are primarily tax based revenues. From the passage of the bond in two thousand and fourteen. And the expenditures in that fund were primarily principal and intra- principal and and interest on the bonds that we have outstanding. I did build in five thousand dollars in that fund for any bond. Maintenance fees that we may get from the bank that's holding those bonds. And then last, the A S B, we talked about how it's primarily done by the students. And so the revenue from that are the fundraising that they're anticipating and the associated investment earnings on that money. That the children fundraise for and that the expenditures are their estimate of what they plan on spending in their buildings. And then that was followed by a breakdown of where what how the each of the buildings budgeted individually. Does that answer questions? It's kind of a long answer.
Thank you for the recap. That was perfect. The other question I had for you. We looking at just kind of where our budget is. Have we been able to retain funds for drama, for music, for choir, all of those specific things?
We have not reduced anything in music or choir. Our issue right now is is filling unfilled positions. But the money to pay those folks is still in the budget.
Then one clarification to that would be at the elementary level, there were some questions as to why, I think it's two schools, maybe Dan, that. Do not have music education. At the time that those positions were posted, there were not any qualified applicants that applied. So went the route of, I think, visual arts, art teachers basically at those particular schools. So it was more of a recruiting issue versus a wasn't a budget issue at all there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Brenda. Okay, there is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, the agenda item has passed for the motion has passed four to zero. All right, moving on to business item six point zero two, H R. Application, employee records and professional development system approval. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approved to enter a contract with Power School Group LLC based on the attached quote.
Second.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second discussion.
Dan, can you come up and join us? I've got some questions for you.
Before you ask a question, just add some good news. We did find a choir teacher for the shared position at the high school.
So that is awesome. Very good news. Okay, so first question is, what's the process system that we use currently for applications? Employee records, professional development, development and what is the cost of that system currently?
Yeah, we use a program that we know as H R M stands for human resource management and that program costs about fifteen thousand, five hundred per year.
Okay, and so and then the one that you're looking to move to with Power School Group, what is the cost difference?
Well, power schools for the transition year, this upcoming year will be twenty five thousand. That'll hit next next fiscal fiscal year's budget and then on September first for twenty four, twenty five, it's approximately thirty two thousand. For that year and then the following year. So it approximately doubles our cost.
Okay, uh, what's the rationale? Why move system?
So we've struggled with H R M for a while. Basically, let me tell you a little bit about what H R M does and what Power Schools does. It manages it manages our personnel record. So things that affect the payroll side, the input of their their salary information. It impacts, it tracks their their professional development, which is important for certificate renewal, so their clock hours, that type of thing. One of the big things that it does is it manages our application system and also all of our recruiting, tracking, screening, that type of thing. And that's where, well, all of those areas, but that's where most of us experience the difficulties with H R M the most. Oftentimes, we have candidates who have to call in, they're frustrated, they can't access certain parts of the application. The references aren't getting sent out. There might be questionnaires on there that they're they're supposed to be linked and they're trying to open them so that they can fill out. Their application, they can't access them. So there's a lot of frustration with that. We've even heard from people that just gave up and they didn't apply to Monroe because they got so frustrated. I myself, when I applied here, couldn't access one of the questionnaires. And I did call in and they kept relinking it, didn't work. Eventually Cassie. Actually emailed it to me and I was able to complete it that way. But that's not an experience we want our applicants to have. actually emailed it to me and I was able to complete it that way. But that's not an experience we want our applicants to have. Power Schools is commonly used throughout the regions. There's many districts that use it. It's a pretty user-friendly platform. One of the advantages it does have is that when you fill out a Power Schools application to any school district, you can actually portage that application over to other schools. So it's, it's, it's very user-friendly.
So are there a lot of school districts that use this?
There are.
Okay. And then for the difference in funding between fifteen thousand to thirty-two thousand, where's that money going to come from?
Well, it's within our HR budget. And so we're shifting some things around. And one of the, one of the main things we're doing is we're cutting the cost of in the past, the department has attended quite a few job fairs. And the data on that has not been very productive. Our, our most productive job fair is the one we hold here in Monroe. And we invite people to come to us, and that's just us. And we get to talk with people, tell them about our open positions, and we've had really good results with that. We'll continue to do that. But the job fairs that, that involve travel, moving around, haven't, haven't brought us a lot of candidates. And so we're cutting most of that out. There'll be at least one that I still go to. MEA puts on a new teacher fair. That's no cost though. That's in Everett at their headquarters. And I go and just meet people that are new to the profession, invite them to, to apply to Monroe open positions. We were talking about ML shortages and some, some of the struggle. This year we did well. We had solid applicant pulls for that position. Dual language, if we ever expand it, those might be things where we do job fairs, but those will be targeted to specific spots where we will go and be targeting a specific hire. But that's what we've done, is we've shifted some of those costs operating within our budget. And so we're not increasing our budget at all.
So not increasing the budget, but we're going to be getting something that is much more user-friendly that can possibly help us recruit more people. Sounds like a win-win.
Yeah, it'll also work better for those other things I mentioned, the personnel management side. That's a big factor. One of the added bonuses, a couple of our analysts have worked with Power Schools extensively before. So we already have some expertise within our departments, been easy transition for us.
That's awesome. Thank you.
One of the cool things on my side, when we moved back to the US in two thousand twenty, we applied to a lot of schools in the region and all the schools that had Power School. Now people realize it's not just turning a resume when you because there's certifications, background checks, and previous experience. You have to upload all of that, college transcripts, everything. That takes a lot of time. Yeah, there's a little bit of like, okay, what's unique about the position you're applying to, but it makes us be more competitive in the region because as individuals have uploaded their materials, it's just, all they do is though, oh, this school uses Power School too, and it clicks and it, because it's all web-based in their system, it ports everything to our district as well. So it makes them apply into our district that much easier. So as we're looking for talent pool and that, that can become a challenge, that's one thing that I really liked about it was that I think it'll help us as we're looking for specific areas of employment.
I was wondering about personnel information, permanent records, porting over from the old system to the new system, you know, the privacy, is that going to be secure? When it's ported over, does it go back as long as we've been keeping the records? I'm in the confidential
Yes.
data business.
Yes, we will preserve the confidentiality, and that's part of the agreement with Power Schools and that transition process. The transition process, actually, we will start with Power Schools in December. At the, December thirtieth is when the contract starts, or thirty-first. And we won't go live with it until May. So we'll have that time to carefully transition our records. And it will be done in a, in a confidential way.
Good. And it also tracks professional del- development so that works in conjunction with that, people fulfilling their professional development, tracking all that.
Yeah, that's an important part of our, both our classified staff, our parent educators now have required professional development hours. And there's a general parent educator certificate. And then of course, teachers, they have their ongoing clock hour requirements and administrators as well.
Great. Thank you.
All right, there is a motion, a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, motion passes four to zero. Moving on to agenda item seven point zero six, approval of consent agenda, is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion, a second of the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated August twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes four to zero. Superintendent Woodward, you are up.
All right, just a couple of quick things this evening. We had a welcome back training for our certificated staff last week. Molly was able to attend in Jen. And I got to present to our teachers for the first time, which was very nerve-wracking and enjoyable at the same time. I, I, I thought I was going to go forty minutes. I think it was closer to an hour. But I really appreciated just the warmth that was exhibited by staff. I enjoyed it immensely. Following my presentation, a gentleman by the name of Christian Page, I think you knew about him from last year. Chris, he presented for four or five hours, I guess. Last year, he worked with our secondary students, just a handful of them, maybe forty or fifty or so on some projects pertaining to student voice and just hearing from students in order, order for us to make good decisions that take student voice into consideration. So he came back to work with all of our staff. And the main message was just back to that student voice piece. Make sure we take their voice into consideration as we embark on school improvement efforts. And one of the focus areas was in utilizing the panorama survey data. And we'll definitely share some of that information with you all the second meeting in September. But he worked with that data with us along with what the smaller groups of students were telling him and the groups that he was facilitating. And staff just digested all that information. And then by school, they took information, their panorama survey information and developed some plans for this school year. And much of it has to do with creating more welcoming environments for each and every one of our students. So that was fantastic. I, I think he was just a great, great presenter and very well received. Molly, don't worry, I won't steal your, your thunder here. But I do want to say congrats to our FFA students. Chuck and Molly and I, along with some district admin, went to the fair on Friday. And I feel, I'm feeling more local now, having been to the fair. That was a blast. And then Saturday morning was the parade. Thank you, Victor, for your coordination and organization. And that was really fun. And how many people volunteered for that, do you think? Yeah, and that was just a, just a blast. So thanks for, for all of that. Yeah, you bet. The, the fair though, back to that, it, it was a lot of fun. There were a lot of students there from the FFA club. And the, the, basically the exhibits that we spent most of the time in was in the landscape design area, horticulture, and then some of the livestock exhibits and competitions. And our students did exceedingly well. That's all I'll say, Molly, because I know you, you want to share a little bit as well. I cannot believe school starts next Wednesday. It, it has been, it's a really strange job to start July one because the momentum is already just cruising forward. And, and there's a lot of summer planning that goes on. And it just feels like things get kind of, you know, they're kind of just, you know, you're able to do some proactive work in July. But it just gets tighter and tighter and tighter and tighter. And the energy just gets really it, it just feels like we're kind of calm and then we're not. Because school started on Wednesday and I got to see our team in action. I've been, I've been super impressed with all of our groups. And, and I cannot wait for next Wednesday. I'll be proud to start school with the folks that are sitting out here. It's a great team. And I cannot wait. So thank you to our staff. That's everybody. And then if any of you would like to do some school visits next week, I'll be going to schools every day. So just give me a call and we can go together. And then throughout the year, most days I will spend time in at least one school, because it's just not hard to do to put that into your schedule. So anytime that you want to meet me at a school, just make a call beginning of the week or even that morning. And I'll just tell you, here's where I'm going if you want to come. Let's get into some classrooms together. So yeah, great start. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Sean. And moving on to agenda item nine point zero one, board reports.
Okay, I'll start off. I'm probably going to be a little long-winded with this, but bear with me because there's so much to celebrate and to talk about, so many good things happening. So first off, our fall sports. They're going to be starting, we have the first volleyball game, September fifth at Monroe High School. Come out and support your lady Bearcats. And then we also have the very first football game of the season, which is September first at Roosevelt. So super excited about the kickoff of fall sports. The other thing, I know Chuck already mentioned this, but the ECAT preschool that the Volunteers of America and the Boys and Girls Club came together, partnered with each other to make this happen. Just amazing classrooms. I'm super excited that we have more opportunities for the children in Monroe to help them be successful. So it was, it was wonderful to go to that, to see so many people turn out. All five board members were there, which was absolutely incredible. And a lot of people were surprised, but I was glad that we were all able to make it and to show our support for something that's so important too. So then back over to the fair, absolutely incredible. Ann Lowe is amazing. She was there to answer any of our questions along with our student Jacob Powell, who is kind of high up there and knows how everything works within the program. It was amazing to see the hanging baskets, the flowers, and to also see Haley and her cow funnel cake. I loved the name, to be able to visit with them after she won the competition. And forgive me, I don't remember what the name of the ribbon was. It like grand champion or something like that. But it was her very first year in FFA. And her dad was telling us stories about how she was up at one o'clock in the morning milking cows and didn't have a lot of sleep. But her and funnel cake, they just excelled at this. And they just represented Monroe well. So another huge congratulations to Haley and her cow funnel cake. It was an incredibly fun afternoon. And I got to try a purple cow float for the first time. Didn't even really know that was a thing, but the blackberry ice cream was delicious. So moving on to the Fair Day Parade, it was amazing to see so many of our administrators, school leaders, just everybody come together to help make it successful, to see our school represented between marching band, football, gymnastics, all of those things. It was an incredible day to be a Bearcat and to live in the city of Monroe. So that was wonderful. The farmer's market last week on Wednesday, it was Kid Market Day. And man, let me tell you, the future is bright with the little entrepreneurs that we have within the Monroe community who were there. One of the girls, they had a bakery that was called Boss Girls Bakery. They had little cards, they had stickers. The macaroons were delicious. Just so many of our talented, amazing students there showcasing, you know, what they do. So it was really fun to be at that and get to experience that with my children as well. We also have a shout out to both the Boys and Girls Club. They are extending their fall sports registration to September first. So if you have not registered for their fall sports and you want to, please go do that. And also the YMCA Fall Sports Registration closes on August thirty-first. So I believe that's Thursday, and then the Boys and Girls Club is on Friday. So if you haven't signed up your kids for fall sports, sports are amazing. The kids learn a lot. They get a lot out of it, how to be a team player. I highly recommend and encourage it. And also, like Sarah from Take the Next Step said, they have scholarships for these things too. So please don't let the money amount deter you from enrolling your child into these sports. Next up, Senator Hawkins is having a town hall on September sixth from six-thirty to seven-thirty, right here in this boardroom. I highly recommend that you attend. He's on the K through twelve Education Committee for the Senate. So last year I was able to attend. He gives a really good update on everything, how much of the budget is being spent towards education, historically, how much has been spent. It's just a great way to learn more about what's going on, to be involved, and then to ask him really good questions at the same time. I know for me, I truly value the strong relationships that I've been able to build with our elected officials, not only in the county, but also at the state level, just to be able to advocate for the Monroe School District and our students better. So the other thing, I got the opportunity to attend a focus group, one of the last focus groups that Superintendent Woodward did. We had two students at this focus group. And man, these kids, they just blew me away with their ideas, their honesty, authenticity, just everything that they had to offer. And I remember walking away at the end feeling like my bucket was filled just from hearing from them, but also encouraging them to be the change that they want to see, to be the leader, to reach out to that student who might not have a friend or, you know, that may feel alone, to make students, you know, feel more welcome and to demonstrate that to their peers through what they do daily. The change starts with them. I would say the same thing to our community. Kindness goes a long way. Be the change that you want to see. Treat people with respect. You don't always have to agree on everything, but respect and kindness and human dignity, I feel like those are the basics. And that's what makes Monroe such a great place to live. So just want to re-encourage everybody kindness, neighborliness, be there for one another. Also, we have the VFW essay contest, the youth scholarship essay contest. The cutoff date for those is October thirty-first at midnight. So I know it's a little bit early, but I want you to start thinking about it. It's a great way to, for students to earn scholarships. We've had quite a few within our district earn scholarships by taking part in this. If you want more information on it, you can go to vfw.org for the rules and more information. They also have the Teacher of the Year Contest. Now, our teacher in middle school has won two years in a row the last couple of years. So nominate a teacher, middle school, high school. We have some amazing teachers who are very deserving of awards like this. So, and I don't think we had too many nominations from Monroe last year. So board members, encourage you, nominate a teacher. If you know a fantastic teacher, please nominate them. Also, the VFW is having a cemetery cleanup on September seventeenth. It's the cemetery off Boulderone Road. It's, I've done this many, many times with my students, with my three boys. It's a great opportunity to serve, to give back, and just to remember the veterans and those who've given so much for us. I'd also just want to give a shout out to all of our teachers and staff at the schools. I know that they have been really hard at work in their classrooms already, prepping them for the first day of schools, making those hallways welcoming and just making sure that all of their ducks are in a row so that they're ready to welcome those students with smiles. So I thank you for your dedication and all the hard work that you're putting in to make those classrooms amazing for every single one of our students. I want to give a shout out to our bus drivers. I know you're getting ready to start transporting some of our most precious cargo to and from schools. And just another thank you to you again. I truly enjoyed meeting and dialoguing with the ones that I got to see at the, at the Fair Day Parade. The bus was amazing. It was colorful. It was bright. It, it just made me smile. It made me incredibly happy. And the people that were there to represent our bus drivers are truly some of the best, and they've been there for a really long time. So I really loved and appreciated that. Also, something that's going to be a little bit different this year, I know some schools have done it, but just in a concerted effort to try to unify the school district and make us feel like we are, we're one school district. Yes, we're all these little schools. But I want to start seeing some things that are the same, whether you go to Freylands or whether you go to the high school. And Chris, thank you for sending out that email so timely. So welcome signs should be up. And they're going to have, hopefully, the different languages that are spoken at each individual school. And my hope with this is that every child feels like they belong and that they're valued. And that this is where they're supposed to be as they walk through those school building doors on September sixth. So I'm, I'm thrilled that that has sort of come to fruition. And I know it was in a short amount of time, so I truly appreciate that. And I am, I'm so excited. I'm proud of our district for how far we've come, for what we've been through, what we've been able to overcome. I know we're not perfect. I know there's still plenty of things to work on, but I love celebrating the good. And I'm excited about where we're going and what this school year is going to be, and just the amazing things that we can accomplish and the success that our students can have. So, okay, I'm, I'm done now. I'm going to get off this box.
I think we ought to hire Director Barnes for Public Relations. I also attended the, the parade. It was fun seeing, oh, hey, there's principal. Hey, there's Kim. Hey. Here's Victor. It was just, it surprised me and it was pleasant. I didn't realize maybe this happened every year, that district chips in and helps organize the event, but a nice sunny day. I enjoyed the visit to the fair. Might be the only day I go to the fair. I'm kind of tired of them after so many years. I wanted to recount all the sounds that the animals make, one by one. I'm kidding. One thing, when I was looking at the different animal. Just. Exhibits, I saw ones from Granite Falls, you know, with dairy cows and the sheep and then cedar crest and I was like, how the heck? Are all these kids farming and raising animals and what I learned about cedar crest is they work. With a local dairy up there, the Ritz and Senders and they kind of, they kind of ran out or they are able to show their animals. Not that that was excellent because. Dairy farms, beef farms, cattle farms are just becoming fewer and far between and husbandry is so important. Like maybe we can work with the Ritz and Cinder Farm or the Groeneweld Farm and so our kids get a chance to. Fit and show animals, it's, it's very valuable. On the E cap, it was a pleasure attending that, you know, there was a lot of dignitaries there, besides the board members. Which we didn't even get to get a chance to get introduced, but Senator Del Benny had a representative there, Snoamish County. Executive Dave Summers was there, our state representatives, senators, the start. One of the key individuals from Boys and Girls Club. And we were talking about working together with these different state agencies to support this, this E cap. And in Snoamish County, I learned that there's a hundred and sixty kids enrolled in. A supported E cap program and sixty of them are in Monroe. But anyway, a very nice facility, was fun to attend, so really an asset to the community. And what else, I think Director Barnes or Public Relations. Director covered everything else. Excited for school to start.
Yeah, I agree, I don't have much more to add, I'm excited for the school year and I'm two, I'm going to tour more schools, I want to hit all the schools up here. Before the end of the year, so it's going to be a lot of fun.
Well, it has been an awesome and eventful August and. One of my highlights was just at the parade this last weekend, it was great to see lots of people there, my kids were in it and so I, my mother in law and my. One nephew and my, one of my nieces were visiting and so we got to show them around our town and we found the best spot, Frank Wagner Elementary Park right there. And Sugar and Spoon Park there next to the taco stand. And I'm like, this is the best place and we had a, we found a spot in the shade next to a really cool family. And as the school bus drove by, Vic, you're going to have to hear this, and we were talking about, they have no clue that was on the school, or you're just a family next to them, they have no idea. And I'm like, she's like, looking at the school bus going, wait, I could be a bus driver. She's a retired Spanish English bilingual grandma who just moved up to Monroe from California to be close to her grandkids. And she's like, I'm like, you should totally turn your application in, so we're going to get her application to Mike hopefully soon. So that was just like, hey, we don't even need to go to the, to the job fairs, we just drive the bus around town. So that was just really cool to see that, lots of great community outreach that way, E cap before that was awesome as well. And Chuck, we were introduced, just so you know, and don't forget Mayor Thomas who got forgotten. You're right, we weren't, oh, we were there as a group, you know, they were really impressed that we were all there though, and I think that one of the greatest, great conversations I had. With one of the directors for the E cap program, I think is they, there was almost a nervousness, they were really eager to talk with several of us. I mean, they were asking to have conversations and they knew about our transition to kindergarten program, I think there was almost a fear of like competition and I was just like. You know, it's kind of like two fleas fighting over a horse, there is more than enough need to go around, but I think if we can collaborate together. And say, hey, this is something that we recognize our whole community has a huge need, how can we be great partners together? And I think they really, it eased a lot of those, yes, I know you like that analogy, that was fun. It's a, it's a, it's a fair analogy since we got the fair going on. Couple of other things, just as an FYI, Skyward today. Got their busing info and student info updates came out, so for those families out there, it is time to check your Skyward, probably update your password. Dust off that app or that website and figure out how to log back in again, I saw that come through today, so updating family info because it is around the corner. Teacher letters went out today and for a lot of them, as kids are getting ready to do that, so this week those will be coming out as well for our families. And then just a couple of updates, since it is around the corner, here's some crazy dates, I'm on the school website, these are just some of them. Sixth grade orientation, September fifth, first day of school for general is September sixth. Then the next day, September seventh, Sky Valley Education Orientation Day. Then September eleventh is the first day for kindergarten. And then September nineteenth is the first day for Sky Valley. Was that as clear as mud? There's a lot going on, so make sure for parents that are watching, family members stay connected to your schools. And ask lots of questions because there are a lot of components, oh, the research, go ahead.
Sean, can you remind me when the resource fair is? That's one that I forgot. Wednesday, okay, so this Wednesday, four to six, Resource Fair, Park Place Middle School. Come, there's going to be tons of stuff, backpacks with, free backpacks with, loaded with stuff for your kids, we're just there to help them get a good. Start to the school year, kick it off on the right foot, so come to that if you can.
Really excited to start the school year off, and that said, no other comments, this meeting, I'm going to use this, is adjourned. It is seven fourteen P M.